We'll call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the January 17th, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting.
The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, January 17, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, William Parker County Administrator, Megan Palmeroy Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of January 10, 2013, as submitted. Samantha Dalton and Priscilla Peggs, Women's Aid and Crisis Representatives, and Laura Queen, Victims Advocate, appeared before the commission and presented the National Stocking Awareness Month proclamation. Ms. Dalton read the proclamation, which encourages citizens to be alert to the increasing incidents and dangers of stalking. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation designating January 2013 as stalking awareness month in Upshur County. David Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, appeared before the commission and provided an update/status report on personnel matters. Sheriff Kaufman has filled the Prevention Resource Officer position at the Buchanan, Upshur High School with the assignment of Rocky Hab Deputy Sheriff. Sheriff Kaufman has received a request for internship from Sharon O'Hearn. Ms. O'Hearn comes highly recommended with excellent references. The item will be placed on next week's agenda for action with an effective date of January 17, 2013. Sheriff Kaufman introduced James Mitchell Kennedy as candidate for the position of Deputy Sheriff. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Mr. Kennedy effective January 27, 2013, at the rate of $15.50 per hour, increasing to $16 per hour after successful completion of training at the Police Academy in South Charleston, West Virginia. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the advertising with change of hearing date from February 14, 2013, to February 21, 2013, for the Notice of Public Hearing Amendment to Enhance 911 Ordinance, 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 21, 2013, increased from current monthly fee of $2.65 to residential $4.50, business and centric $6.50. William Parker provided a review of the request from Virgil D. Miller for the commission to consider approval of usage of sick time, 120 days earned as Deputy Sheriff, to be credited to public employees retirement system as service credit. Mr. Parker reviewed the policy in the Upshur County Employee Handbook of Personnel Guidelines, which outlines the timeline and requirements for documentation. No documentation was received within the specified time period by the commission. After discussion, no action was taken. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of April Smith as E-911 Communications Center dispatcher, effective January 24, 2013. William Parker was requested to follow up with Ms. Smith to schedule an exit interview. William Parker provided a review of proposed budget provisions for the General County Fund and the Coal Severance Fund. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the budget revisions as submitted. The commission reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, Minor Boundary Annexation Application and Governing Statute, West Virginia Armory National Guard Location, Upshur County Wellness Complex, and related property for utility right-of-way in the Brushy Fork area, hearing at 10:30 a.m. on Thursday, 1/24/2013. Number two, Notification from Oilfield Trucking Solutions, Chesapeake Energy Corporation Regarding Facility Closure per Terms of Worker Adjustment and Retraining Notification Act. Number three, Correspondence from Region Seven Planning and Development Council Regarding 2013 Small Cities Block Grant Program Application Timelines. Number four, Agendas and/or Notices of Meetings as listed. Number five, Meeting Minutes and/or Financial Reports as listed. Number six, Board of Equalization and Review as listed. Number seven, Meetings as listed. Number eight, Appointments Needed or Upcoming as listed. Terry Gould, Manager of Tenerton Public Service District, and Dave Watson and other representatives of Thrasher Engineering, appeared before the commission and provided an update/status report on the PSD's request of a boundary adjustment for sewer service in the Lawrence area. After discussion, the commission requested the agenda item to be continued at next week's meeting with input and additional information from Sam Ludlow, City of Buchanan Sewer Department Director. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and refunds as listed. The commission approved the following requests to attend meetings as listed. The commission recessed at 11:45 a.m. The commission reconvened at 1:30 p.m. The commission met with Samantha Woods, Representative of the Office of West Virginia State Auditor, who reviewed the audits for fiscal year ended June 30, 2011, and fiscal year ended June 30, 2012, and performed an exit interview. The commission will review the comments and adjustments at a future meeting. The commission met with Debbie Thacker Wilfong, Upshur County Clerk, and David Kaufman, Upshur County Sheriff, to review and discuss audit issues. Greg Harris, Director of Facility Operations, appeared before the commission to discuss replacing the fire panel located in the annex building. Mr. Harris was requested to follow up with estimates and report back at a future meeting. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission meeting adjourned at 3:30 p.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not on ask for motion to be approved as such?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sound motion carry.
Our nine o'clock appointment canceled due to the weather. We'll reschedule that at a future date.
More fair weather day.
More fair weather day.
Yep. I think our one to two inches kind of multiplied a little bit, so... Okay, well, our next scheduled appointment's at 9:30, which is 15 minutes, so we'll go over some of other issues in the interim. First item is approval of West Virginia Wesleyan College intern Sharon O'Haram...
Hearn.
Herm?
Hearn.
Huh?
Hearn.
Hearn. Thank you. He's our speech therapist here. Okay. Effective January 17, 2013. And that request was made last week, and so do we have a motion to approve that?
I'll make that move. I'll make that...
You'll move.
I'll move. Not make the motion.
All right. We're learning. Okay. Do you want to second that?
I'll second that.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sound motion carry. Next item is Notice of Public Hearing Amendment to Enhance 911 Ordinances at 11:00 a.m. on Thursday, February 21, 2013, increased from current monthly fee of $2.65 to residential to $4.50, and business and centric $6.50. So that will be February 21st at 11:00 a.m.
I did provide the commission, and there's copies available, just revenue, current revenue, and some projected if the increase is approved, as well as the current estimated annual expenditures. Our current landline revenue is approximately $275,000, and the current wireless from the cellphone money that we get through the Public Service Commission is approximately $500,000, for a total of $775,000. If the increase is approved, as presented at our public hearing, there'll be an increase in revenue of approximately $225,000 for the landline revenue, bringing it up to $500,000, continuing with $500,000 with the wireless cellphone revenue through the Public Service Commission, or total proposed revenue of approximately $1 million then. Down below, you see the estimated current annual expenditures, and this can vary depending on overtime and staffing levels. But compensation for the 911 center and addressing matting, approximately $450,000. Payroll-related costs, retirement, FICA, workers' comp, et cetera, is approximately 25%, which is $112,500. Medical coverage, life insurance, other insurance coverage is $130,000. Total payroll-related is $692,500. Debt service on the facilities, $130,500. Phones utilities, just over $62,000. Maintenance and equipment replacement, as well as maintenance agreements on the equipment, $42,250. Advertising dues, et cetera, $5,000. Travel and training is approximately $10,000. The sole expenses, $7,500. Total estimated cost of current operations, $950,000. Now, that does not include any really expenditures associated with the emergency medical dispatch, because we haven't got a lot of those expenses yet. I know there'll be an increase in retirement starting in July 1st, and some of the other payroll-related costs, but that's just some numbers that you have that will be reviewed at the hearing.
This is... Our consideration for this, of course, as stated previously in press, as well as in the public hearings, or the commission meetings, has been that there is a reduction in the number of hard-wire telephones that we receive, you know, funding through to support 911. Do you recall, this has been about seven or eight years ago, I think, when we first established this by... under state legislation? What was the initial income from the fee on landline phones? And I see we have around $275,000 in funding generated by those hard-wire phones. What was it historically? Because I think you've indicated around 30% reduction in the amount of money we're bringing in through the hardwire, because people are using cellphones now, which we have no ability yet controlling or setting a fee. Public Service Commission does that. But could you give us an idea? I know you don't have the records maybe in front of you.
Yeah, I don't have the records in front of me, but, you know, based on my memory, we're probably looking at another, you know, reduction from where we used to collect of approximately, probably $85,000 a year.
Right.
I would say that would be a conservative estimate of what we used to collect. For example, I know the... and Frontier's just one of the providers. There's other providers out there, but their collection remittance last month was just under $15,000, and they're... yeah, of course, they used to have, when it was Verizon, maybe more lines. I don't... I'm not sure of the line distribution number between carriers, but, you know, it was $23,000, $24,000 in itself. So it's, you know, some of the other carriers have picked up some of those lines and made up some of the offsets to that, so... A reduction of $85,000, and I'll try and do some research between now and the 21st of February and find that out, but right off the top of my head right now, I'd say $85,000 a year of reduction.
And that was the only source of income for that 911 fee? I mean, the money's coming in from... which are controlled or... which is mandated, the entire 911, and now the medical 911 is mandated by the state legislature. It's something that we have to maintain and provide for the public.
Excuse me. The emergency medical dispatch must be in place by July 1st in counties, so that cost or that training cost will have some training cost between now and then. I'd have to... I don't remember when the wireless money initially started. It was a number of years ago, but until that time, that was... landline fee and supplement appropriations from the General County Fund were the only sources of revenue for the operations.
Now, when the 911 medical dispatch requirement goes into effect, you say July 1st of this coming year, will that increase the number of personnel that have to be on duty during a shift?
We... but we... a year or so ago, we tried to increase the number of personnel in anticipation of that. At this point, we don't really know the answer to that until we get involved, yet hopefully not, because there's... not all EMS calls must you stay on the line. There's certain EMS calls that you must stay connected to the caller until EMS arrives. But we've had a difficult time getting up to the projected staffing levels, you know, at that point, which we still are, have openings right now that will be advertising. I don't think we'll need additional staff, leastly not initially, maybe after we get in for a few months or a year to see how the call volumes and types of calls come through. It may require additional staff for certain time periods possibly.
It definitely will require additional training for the current staff to familiarize them with procedures to follow in the event of certain calls that come in, such as a heart attack, or something along those lines, that they are mandated to stay on the line, which sense of requiring them to stay on the line prohibits them from answering other calls that may come in. So that increases the stress or the... yeah, stress, if that's the term to use, for the other people that are on staff at that time on the shift that comes in.
Yes, it'll... there'll be definitely expense involved in the program, as well as, you know, the program through ABCO, which is what we've signed a contract to do, and the training involved in that. And there's a possibility of reviewing those call types and patterns of the day when they come in, where we may need some additional staff for certain time periods during the day.
We won't know that until...
Till we get into it.
As someone said, we... famous quote that, "To understand what's going to be in this, we have to be there before we can understand what it's going to require." Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Kind of like passing a bill before you know what's in it, right?
That's right.
Okay, we have correspondence from the West Virginia State Auditor's office, Chief Inspector/Division regarding a report on applying, agreed upon procedures, Upshur County magistrate court for a period ending December 31, 2011.
I just included the cover letter. We have the report that's available for public review as well. I think it's filed at the Office of the County Clerk. I know the magistrate's office has it also, the report. We've always received a good report. The only areas of concern were segregation of duties, which is difficult with the size of staff that they have, and there's really no way to... good way to solve that. And then the magistrate court program, the software program that the Supreme Court provides, the auditor's office routinely and continually finds shortcomings in that program of being able to go back in and change numbers, receipts after the fact, and one person being able to do that. And that's just a programming issue, a software issue that the Supreme Court needs to fix, replace, whatever the case may be. But the report's available. It's a good report.
Okay. So what's the Supreme Court's response to that audit, honey?
We do not get a response from the Supreme Court normally. I don't know if the auditor's office receives one or not, but it's been that way for a number of years, the software program that they use. I don't know what their plans are to upgrade or replace.
Okay. Well, we have just a couple more minutes. Might remind everyone of our up-and-coming Board of Equalization review, starting February February 12th is the mineral hearings. Then we'll have folks from Charleston up on coal and gas and oil properties. And we will adjourn on February 27th at 9:00 a.m. So if anyone has any questions or concerns on their property values, or... that's the opportunity to... the Upshur County Commission sets its board review, to review that and to make sure everything's the way it should be.
Would encourage, if there are questions or concerns from individuals or companies, that they first contact the Office of the Upshur County Assessor to do an informal review, to make sure all the information that we've received has been correct. Many times, they can solve the issue just with more information, either at the office here or through the State Tax Department, the Property Tax Division on minerals, so...
Okay, well, we still have a couple minutes. Willie, do you have anything else that we need to discuss?
We've got information in your packet. I can review that at the time for the annexation of what you have there, as well as the Tenerton Public Service District. Did go back on the Tenerton Public Service District and tried to provide a history according to what the minutes reflect back in 1995. And it appears there may have been a couple of different hearings that may have led to some of the confusion in the Brushy Fork area, as well as some of the other areas, Lawrence area and other areas in that regard, but I can go through those as the hearing presents. And then the annexation application, the... I do not have the certificate of publication. I do have where it was in the record Delta of the required days, but I have those available. It was posted at five locations, and I'll reflect that during our hearing also. You have to also post that at five locations. That's the proposed annexation area, which was a little difficult. Not difficult, they were just very close together, you know, because of the size of the area. It was a smaller area. And then the packet that the city's provided on answering the required, once as outlined in the statute. So I can reflect that information at the proper time during the public hearing.
Okay. Well, it's 9:30, and we have Joe Lighton, Request Letter of Unqualified Support for Upshur County Multi-Family Housing Projects. If you'd like to step up, sir?
I asked Mr. Lighton to appear before he would, you know, before we get started, as a follow-up to our meeting that we had probably a couple weeks ago, a week and a half ago. The commission and staff were invited to the Landlords Association meeting concerning this project. And during that meeting, I asked Mr. Lighton, you know, what his time period was for a letter of unqualified support, and, you know, the end of the month was a projected date of getting that to him if the commission so desired. So that's why I've asked him to appear today, to be here, any follow-up questions that the commission may have, or other information Mr. Lighton may have, and then if it'll be an agenda item one way or the other for next week, for consideration.
Okay.
The podium's yours.
Sure. If you'd like to just step over to the mic there and then, if we have any questions.
Well, I don't have any questions, but I'm certainly open to answering any questions that you guys may have. I met with the commission, what, about six weeks ago, when we first made the presentation of the idea of creating some affordable housing in Buchanan? And then we followed up with the Landlords Association meeting, which I believe two of you three were there.
Those two were. I had some maintenance issues at my residence.
Okay. But I came away from both meetings with the impression, rightly or wrongly, that there was no serious objection to anything that was contained in my presentation. And if there are any such objections, I would certainly be willing to entertain them and, you know, handle them one by one. I don't know that there's a whole lot for me to say at this stage, but I'm yours. Whatever you would want me to say or present, I'm happy to do.
I think, one, there was some misunderstanding as to what the county commission... I mean, I've heard, you know, rumors that the county commission is going to donate a piece of property, and they're going to do this. Why don't you just start with layout how this program works, and how the tax credits work, and that whole process, so everybody understands how that part of it works?
Sure. In the world of affordable housing, which some people will call low-income housing, the program that seems to have survived over the years that this has been going on is what is known as the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program.
Question, so we understand, or so the public understands, these are rentals as opposed to ownership?
That is correct. That is correct. The program was created by the federal government, and every year, they allocate a certain amount of federal tax credits to the states based on populations. West Virginia receives an allocation of approximately $50 million in tax credits. This is not cash money. It's tax credits every year. And they entertain proposals from developers like myself, and evaluate those proposals based on a scoring system that is predetermined, signed into, I guess it's law, by the governor. So everyone plays by the same rules. And then the West Virginia Housing Development Fund, which is the allocating agency in West Virginia, evaluates those proposals and ranks them according to score, and then, depending on how much money or how much tax credits they have, they allocate to those worthy projects. So the process is that developers must apply to the West Virginia Housing Tax Credit... the West Virginia Housing Development Fund every year for an allocation of credits for projects that they think make sense for the coming year. So our applications in 2013, we believe, although it's not been determined yet, will be due at the end of May. So Willie's question as to the timing really is related to that deadline. There is a lot of things that a developer must do to get ready to submit that application, because the West Virginia Fund wants to make sure that everything is in place in order that these projects be successful. So nothing can be missing. So there's a lot of work to be done. So anyway, those tax credits are given to the developers. I was fortunate enough to be awarded an allocation for, and we have a project, of 28 rental housing units, one, two, and three-bedroom units, that is now in the process of breaking ground. ground in Glenville, or just outside of Glenville, about a mile. And we would like to do a similar project here because my analysis of the demographic data indicates there is a need for it in the Buchanan area. And there is a certain, what they call census tract, that encompasses a lot of the, I guess, the east side of Buchanan, the Buchanan River to the east, that receives incentive under this low-income housing tax credit program. So in other words, if we build in that specific area, we get more tax credits than we would if we built outside. And in today's economics, if you don't have that extra batch of tax credits, the projects just don't, they're not economically feasible.
When you say east Buchanan, the census tract you're talking about is outside the city limits?
No.
Or does it incorporate part of the city limits?
Well, about half and half, city limits and toward Elkins.
Right.
In that direction. But, okay, so I think the environment is right in Buchanan right now, that if I were to have the support, the county commission, the Economic Development Authority, we'd like to get the support of the mayor and, you know, everybody else involved in the community, the landlord, landlord, landlords association, if we have the community.
You would not get as many credits if you built outside.
That's exactly right. In terms, in the industry speak. As you mentioned, the low-income tax credit program is the key to the, to the whole thing because that would provide somewhere between 80 and 90% of the funding that we need. The battle's not over upon award of the tax credits because we still have to find someone who will buy the tax credits out on the open market. And those guys can be a little bit difficult to satisfy at times, depending on the economic situation at hand. But that would be one of the future steps that we would take. But the tax credits are the key.
So at this point, would, or would it, would you not know that they, what the actual rent cost would be? Or would that, is that part of your proposal as to exactly what?
Yeah. When we make the final application in May, we're going to have to project rents. Just for the, I guess, the benefit of the audience, the rents are regulated by HUD. So we've got to live within a certain band.
That's the Housing and Urban Development Department, pardon, Federal Cabinet.
The federal Housing and Urban Development people. So they set out guidelines that are adjusted every year, and they will determine a band within which the rents must fall. So we're restricted by those. We said, I said earlier that I project rents to be, oh, ranging from $350 a month to about $500. I'll still stand with that. That's an all-inclusive amount, which would include utilities. We were projecting somewhere in the vicinity of 30 units. They are all rental units. There'll be ones, twos, and three bedrooms, pretty much evenly distributed. But we'll fine-tune that calculation as, as we move forward. And like I say, the support of the community is very important, not only in the scoring system, but it's important to me because I don't want to work where I'm not wanted. And I like working with people that, that are cooperating and assisting and because, you know, there's going to be a bit of assistance required.
Well, Jody, you're here with, you and Kay, you have some questions for this gentleman?
I do, a little summary, however you want to handle that.
Well, if you want to just step up here, I'm sure.
Sure.
And I've got copies for you guys.
Okay.
Because following our meeting, we just had questions.
You can just sit down there in the comfy chair if you want to.
There's one for you and one for each of them.
And help me out because we don't want to misunderstand any of those. I did want to thank, Donnie, we missed you, JC and Willie and Buddy and Steve Foster for coming to the Landowners Association. We kind of just found out about this a little bit last minute, so we scrambled to get a little more information. Excuse me, and I apologize, Jill Marsh is our president, couldn't be here this morning, and Mary Dean is somewhere stuck on I-79 trying to get to or from Harrison County. So I'm the messenger. And the reason I gave you an outline, not that I've ever been accused of being long-winded, I'm going to try to stay, I know you'd like that, stay close to script.
I just wasn't sure how you were related to Joyce.
Yeah. So, yeah. So following your presentation, and I want you, anything you can step in here and correct me, feel free. As a landlords association, we represent over 2,000 rental units in Upstate County. Those are identified on the census. We've made phone calls and they're, they're there. We had some questions following the presentation because it's something that's a little new to us, other than Cambridge Heights. In your presentation, and you may have changed some of these things since then, our concerns as landlords, you know, and taxpaying folks here, there has not been, if I'm right, your Gilmer County has just now started, you've never actually built and completed a low-income tax credit project today. Correct?
Me, myself?
Correct.
That is correct.
Okay.
But appreciate I'm partnering with people that have done.
But I mean, at this point, you're just now getting started. Okay. Our concerns were, since this is in a pre-application state, and by your own statement, there hasn't been a real community needs assessment. All we're basing the need factor on is a 2010 census, and I've got some information on that in a little bit. Everything is kind of up in the air. For us, we're concerned if you're going to, to rubber stamp something, I don't mean rubber stamp, but you know what I'm saying, give them a green light with so many vague things. We don't have a real property identified. We don't have a investors identified. We don't have a property management team identified that would be the management, Joe, bless your heart, you're going to build it and not going to be management on site. So we looked at that. Down, basically, and you'll see in your notes there, what would that housing complex bring to Upstate County? We're going to try to answer some questions. Maybe you can help us with some of those things. The first thing was, and it always comes up, and that's Steve's bailiwick is growth and development. And I think everyone here will agree and beyond that we need jobs in Upstate County. And that's the first thing we looked at. According to the presentation, this will provide one net new job, a part-time property manager, a part-time maintenance person. Is that still correct?
And a lot of service industries will.
In the building, but once it's a full-time, one, one job post-construction.
Well, jobs, some will have to get the grads.
Sure.
And the shows.
Sure.
Some will have to paint buildings.
Right. And that was a big thing, is looking at, we need manufacturing jobs and so on, so forth. The comment that we made, and several of us got together and put this together, the complex is not going to provide additional housing for folks coming to the area looking for jobs. If they are, they're going to be low-income, low-paying jobs. They're not going to attract new manufacturing jobs. It's not like if, if the XYZ company wants to come in here and says, I can't find affordable housing. If they're bringing engineers and in medium to upper level income, they can't rent in this project like they can't rent in Valley Green. They're going to be restricted from that. I, you had mentioned maybe 550, I even went up that far. You'd mentioned the other evening, the eligible low-income renters would be 40 to 60, there'd be a 40 to 60%. We didn't understand that. So we called the gala at Cambridge Heights, who's the only other income tax credit-based project here. And you had mentioned, I think one of the questions was, which we just didn't understand, if someone came to you and only made $12,000 a year, could they rent there? And your comment was no. Do you remember that one? And that the HUD guidelines would prevent that.
The answer is no, but it's a qualified no because if they went to jail and got a Section 8 voucher, they could rent there.
Well, actually, according to Cambridge Heights, and again, maybe just some more research, that's, that's not actually accurate. And that was her, that was her, her comment. Basically, if you look at the income or the amounts, rental amounts, they base that on, they're going to do a 40 and a 60. So if you come in and say, I make $10,000, and a couple of you I mentioned that too, if I make $10,000 a year and he's doing a 40% income-based, low-income housing, they're going to take that $10,000, multiply it by 40%, and say that person can only afford to pay. And that's what they do at Cambridge Heights, $4,000 a year rent, divided by 12, and that's what they're going to adjust and say, this is all that person can pay for rent. So based on the $350 a month rent for a one-bedroom apartment, a person could actually make as little as $10,500 a month rent, I mean, I'm sorry, income. The two-bedroom, they could go clear. So it's, it's low and almost very low, according to Cambridge Heights. A two-bedroom unit could be $13,005, and a three-bedroom could be as low as $16,500. Then you go a step further and you made the comment about HUD, and that's actually true. If that person came and said, well, I only make $9,000 a month and I want to rent that, or a year, I want to rent that one-bedroom unit, and they did all the mashing of the numbers and said, well, you don't fall, according to these numbers, you couldn't afford that, then they would go to Jill and HUD, the housing authority, to try to obtain a HUD voucher, which would make up the difference. If they could only pay 300 or 275, they would go try to get a HUD voucher to make up the difference of that rent. Happens every day. We as landlords are dealing with that every day. According to Jill Marsh, and I wish she could be here, there have been no new HUD vouchers issued in Upstate County from the federal government for the past eight to 10 years. They aren't out there. They aren't available. There's no money for them. The only way a person can get on a HUD voucher is if someone dies, moves, changes jobs, and basically relinquishes that HUD voucher, and then that voucher can go to use for someone else. So there's nothing available. And I'm just trying to help you out a little bit because that's something you, you may not know. I didn't know that until a few days ago.
How many vouchers are freed up because of death or moving?
Well, I'm, I'm going to think of, I'm going to get to that. Go down to the next thing where it says, let's talk need. We're basing this whole possibility on a 2010 census. And according to the 2010 census, there were 2,396 renter-occupied units in Upstate County identified. Of those, 437 were vacant, or a 6.8% vacancy. That's a lot of empty units when you have 437 in the county. Now, I don't have the, the ability to tell you from that study how many were low-income versus, you know, it's probably out there. Just recently, before our meeting, and I think we mentioned that, we did a quick, two or three of us, phone survey of just the landlords that we knew quickly that had large amounts of rental properties. And we identified in the last week over 1,100 units. We know there's over 2,000, but the ones that we could call quickly. And of that, there were over 100 units available right now, today. The interesting thing was, again, didn't know this till yesterday, Jill was supposed to present this. So if you look at the 2010 census, I know we have a substantial amount of rental property. We were rented higher or had a lower occupancy, or a lower vacancy rate, I guess you'd say in 2010 than we've ever had because we had oil and gas contractors, we had all kinds of those folks who weren't here today. We still have some, but they're, they're gradually moving out of the area. But in 2010, we probably had a lower vacancy rate in Upstate County than we've had for a while, and that was wonderful, and we'd love to see that again. What we're concerned about is, is this growth and development? Is this just someone's going to move from my unit to your unit to someone else's unit and back? Is it really helping our economy? Although, we know that the tax dollars, and we have that in there. The interesting thing is, in checking with low-income, which is what this target market is, the Buchanan Manor, and we're all familiar with that one, currently has two vacancies. That's rare. Jill Marsh mentioned hers. Cambridge Heights, just to know where they're at, they initially came in with some different figures, but right now, 26 of 50 units at Cambridge Heights is considered low to very low income, and they're on those HUD vouchers in that 40, 50, 60% realm. The interesting thing I found, and those of us that rent property understand and have worked with the HUD, and I think some of you gentlemen have too, Hinkle Drive and Valley Green typically have really long, like, really long waiting lists. And I asked Jill if I could quote her because she brought it up. Hinkle Drive currently has one vacancy, have a second one available in a couple of weeks. Her waiting list normally is very high, and I think most of us know it, sometimes you wait for a year to get in there. They've had upwards of 100 applicants on a waiting list. She, she said yesterday, and I quote her, her current waiting list is at an all-time low in the 26 years she has been at, at the housing authority.
What is her waiting list?
It's at an all-time low. I don't know, and she didn't give me a number today, but she said it can run upwards of 100 on a waiting list. But I was shocked because I, it's the first time she's told me that. She said they're at an all-time low with people, and she has a vacancy now and one coming up. So they'll start rolling through that waiting list and that'll reduce. And I've heard it said that, you know, there's people calling us and they need apartments, they need rentals. Absolutely. And I mentioned some of those things, and we've talked about this, some of it in jest and some seriously. There's always, always, I don't care if you have 500 new units of any kind tomorrow, you're always going to have requests for rentals. Most landlords here don't take pets. Those people are still looking. We, we get people who have negative references. They've been evicted from other landlords. They have bad credit. We have some units that include in yours would utilities. We have people that can't rent because they've unfortunately had their utilities eliminated, and so they can't get those. So they're looking for places with, and there's very limited in the county, to my knowledge, that do pay utilities. So those folks are looking. They don't have a job. They don't have income. And believe it or not, we get a lot of folks call every day, have some very unrealistic expectations. We want seven or eight people in a two-bedroom apartment and we want to pay $300 a month. We want a luxury three-bedroom house for $500 a month, furnished and garage and everything. And they just don't exist, and they're not going to exist with this. In summary, just going through the nuts and bolts, economic growth, whereas we're going to create one full-time or two-part-time positions. That's it, once construction's done. We will have, and we grant you that, additional property tax revenue. Anything that builds is, is going to have that. And as I said, basically, we looked at need as, you know, looking at Jill in that same type project, having a lower occupancy or lower vacancy waiting list than she's ever had in history. That says obviously things are a little freeing up here. We were concerned, and I understand it's in an infancy stage, but there's so much vague information for the county commission or any of us to really say, yeah, gung-ho. We don't have any details. We don't have any, there's so many unknowns. We don't have a track record on it. The one thing that was telling for us, and please don't take this personally because we know this is a developer and a project-based thing, at our recent meeting, the question that we went back to is, someone in the audience, I don't remember who it was, asked Mr. Leighton if he felt there was a need for the project, and he said, yes. He's looking at the survey, that's fine. But someone else asked him, if there were no income tax credits on this low-income thing, would you invest your own money? And he said, no. So we look at it, you know, and I know there's investors just looking for tax breaks, and that's okay. We have a concern, some of us, Willie, I don't know about you gentlemen, remember and sat through presentations with Cambridge Heights about 10 years ago. And they, you may remember some of it. Promises, proposals, pictures, presentations. They were only going to be a minimum of 20% low income. It was going to be professionals, executives. It was going to be higher-income people. And all I'm going to say to that is, is that what we have today? I mean, I think you can look and say, that's not what we have today. So our concern is not, I mean, you know, he may build a wonderful project, but we don't know that today. And all we're asking, do we really have enough facts today? Really, facts to justify an unconditional endorsement of kind of an unknown project? All we're asking is landlords, we're not against growth and development. We strongly encourage it. Love to see something that produce jobs or even some additional housing. All we're asking is that we hope you will consider to possibly reconsider, maybe table this till you get some more facts. I don't know if you can proceed with the needs assessment? I think that would be a critical thing without their blessing. I would assume you could, because that's part of your application. We're just respectfully requesting you consider, you know, waiting till we get some more facts and is there really a need, a community needs assessment? Answer some of the unknowns because it's really pretty vague now. When, once you, once you sign a letter of unconditional support, you know, what's today and, and I use Cambridge Heights as a good example, might not be what's tomorrow. So that's our only position. We want growth and development. Just kind of think about it till, we would hope you would look at facts and, and real things. That's our only thing. And don't take that personally, John, because that's not meant that way.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I was on the commission when the Cambridge Heights issue came before us. What effect has that had on your, your vacancy rate with Cambridge Heights, would you say?
Interestingly, we worried about that a little bit. So it's not like we're worried because a lot of us, we can't compete with 350. and fifty dollars a month, including utilities. I don't think any landlord in Upstate County can, that's the point. We lost personally one and maybe two renters. We've had many come back, wanting to come back from there because of the issues that you know are there, the conditions, the quality of construction, and the security. And we've had far more want to get out of there and rent from us, and I say that nicely, but it's a fact. We have one tenant we lost and is still there, and he's not happy, but he's, we can't pay, you know, he's paying two hundred and seventy-nine dollars a month for a one-bedroom, you know, including, but I think theirs is just water, sewer, trash, they don't include all utilities. So we did, I mean, we saw some, but they just shuffled around. I mean, you know, and the HUD vouchers will just shuffle around. We have some HUD vouchers, several landlords do, and they're gonna go from, you know, from here to there, and they'll go there for a while, and they may stay, and then they'll go somewhere else. So to us, it just seems very vague, and we just felt maybe, we as a county, is this in the best interest of the county to endorse a hundred percent something that's still pretty vague? And you admitted that, there's a lot of ifs, ands, things going. I mean, us, we would look at maybe going down the road and encourage you to think a little bit, get a little more information, and then maybe revisit it and look at doing an endorsement, once you have some more hardcore facts.
Just out of curiosity, I know there's, has there ever been anybody from Upstate County that's applied for these federal tax credits?
Not that I'm aware of, and we actually discussed that, there's so many, and he mentioned there's so much paperwork and restrictions. You almost, you own it, but you don't, because you are, aren't you? You're very, I mean, Cambridge Heights will tell you, you know, Scotty's over there, but, and the management company manages it, but they are very tied into strict guidelines. So you, as an individual, you really lose a lot of control over it. So we, my family's talked about it, and it's just pretty restrictive, but it's possible. I mean, you know, it's just not something we would probably entertain.
Well, anytime you get anything from the federal government.
That's right.
There'll be a lot of string to tell you.
They give you a lot, but...
And the purpose of this is to provide assistance to low-income, so when there's tax credits to provide low-income rent, then you have to follow these guidelines.
There's ties to it, sure, sure. So that's only our position, is just to think about it.
Any questions for Jody?
I have no questions for Jody, but I don't know if Mr. Foster would like to make any comments, either in support of or not of Mr. Lighton's brother.
Has the Development Authority made a decision on their...
We have not taken that position on this as of yet. Obviously, the Development Authority's mission is to do whatever we can to raise the quality of life however we can in Upstate County. It influences or helps a couple of people, that's what it's all about. A rising tide raises all ships. And that's the one thing that, the other thing that you cannot get into this discussion about is the quality of housing that's available. There may be five thousand rental units available in Upstate County, but what kind of quality are they?
Absolutely.
As opposed to something that's new? That's the only issue that I can't...
And we're not gonna argue that, because you're right. We can't police them either, and we understand there's the good, the bad, and the ugly.
Well, the four units that are now referred to as a Floridian, that I've noticed, are a townhouse. Those are rentals.
Yes.
Was there any concern expressed regarding the construction of those?
No, I think three of the four, if not all four, are already rented.
They were filled before they were ready to be filled.
Yeah.
And their rental's probably on the pretty upper end of that.
About mid-seven hundreds, plus utilities.
And two are worn out.
Seven fifty, I heard.
And two of those are rented, I think.
They're all rented now.
I knew three were, and I thought four was ready, yeah. No, I mean...
I mean, there's, of course, there's a need for both ends of the spectrum, based on people's income, what they can afford.
Yeah, and that was the thing, we looked on the growth, like we said, with the jobs and things, is if, you know, something that Sam Baxter put in could, you know, if you had some new engineering jobs or high-level jobs, those would be the ideal candidates for that. If you're looking at bringing in manufacturing or other jobs that are gonna pay middle-to-average, or middle-to-above-average income, which is, I would think, what we want in the county, they can't rent there, so that's not going to help them at all. This is strictly the low-income folks, and according to Jill, it would be low to very low. When we looked at that forty percent number to match up with the rent, you're talking from ten thousand five hundred, and I don't think that's the job market that, I mean, those folks need housing, don't get me wrong, but they're gonna shift around and things, but that's not, folks, that's not what's going to attract business to Upstate County is a low-income housing project.
But unfortunately, there are a lot of those jobs in Upstate County. And fortunately, those people need some help with their rental when they're making those low wages.
Well, I think also, you have to look at the fact that currently, at least last statistics I read, over fifty percent of all students in Upstate County have reduced charge or free lunch and breakfast.
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two percent.
I thought it was close to seventy, yeah.
So that indicates to me that there are a sizable population within the county that is having difficulty making ends meet.
Yep.
I don't think it's unique to Upstate County, this is something that we've experienced nationwide here the last several years.
Matt's with the opportunity house, and Jody, I'm not rushing you off, but if you're finished, Matt, why don't you come up?
Actually, I wasn't expecting to be here today, I was supposed to meet with the homeless coordinator from the Veterans Administration, but because of the weather, she couldn't be here. And it's kind of ironic that I'm here today, because today is actually the day when we participate in what's called the point-in-time count. So we're actually out counting homeless people in Upstate County today. Yesterday, we sent a grandmother with a one-month-old child to homeless shelter in Clerksburg, because we didn't have housing that we could put her into in Upstate County. So we mentioned the school district and the free lunches, I talked to Jody Akers last week, and the school has identified eighty homeless children in Upstate County, kids that go to school in the morning, and they don't know where home's gonna be when they get out of school. Usually, their families are doubled up, they've got two or three families staying in one house, and, you know, a lot of those can be volatile, so, you know, the kid can be at school, there can be an argument among the adults that day, and all of a sudden, that kid's homeless, and they're out looking for another relative to stay with. I actually, last year, we've worked with Jody, Jody fortunately has several of our former residents and some of our current participants in a leasing project that we do also through HUD, where we have to locate apartments that fit into the HUD Fair Market Rent qualification, and that's been extremely difficult. I actually have funding for thirteen apartments, but we've only been able to fill seven of those. And I have plenty of people.
What is the reasoning for that, Matt?
We can't find properties that meet, that we can lease and meet the HUD Fair Market Rent Guidelines at low-income tax credit properties. It's another irony, I was the construction superintendent for a long time and built low-income tax credit properties all over the country. So I'm kind of familiar with them, not from the development standpoint, but, you know, a little bit, because obviously, we work for the developers. But that's our main barrier, is that we cannot find affordable apartments. Certainly, there's some empty, I'm aware, too, that would be great for us, would be location-wise, be perfect, they're about a hundred dollars a month, more than we can afford to pay, and they've both been empty for months. You know, despite the fact that if I was a landlord, I would say, "Well, if this apartment has been empty for two months, at six hundred dollars a month, there's the twelve hundred dollars that I would recoup by leasing that apartment for a year, for a hundred dollars less than it is." So, but I'm sure that, you know, it's their property, they're able to do what they want with it. All I can really speak to is that there is an absolute need for affordable housing in this community. It is a problem. We have homeless people that were, and it's not that we're gonna attract, and that's always the big fear, the boogeyman is, all of a sudden, we're gonna become a haven for every low-income, mentally ill person in the state, and they're all gonna migrate to Upstate County. They're here, they're already here. Plenty of people in this county trying to live on seven hundred dollars a month that they get in disability. I just, a few days ago, I took one of my project participants at the halfway house, who's, you know, he's in that category. He was born with fetal alcohol syndrome, been involved with, he's had some law enforcement contact. His mother, he was afraid his father, he heard rumors his father was moving to Arkansas, so he wanted to go see his father before he left. His father was living in a tent on the riverbank in Fairmont, his mother lived about a block away, and when he showed up to see her at, like, ten o'clock in the morning when we got there, she was drunk. And, you know, this kid's always gonna need help. He was born with fetal alcohol syndrome, he has cognitive disabilities because of that. And so far, he was in forty-six foster homes before he was eighteen, before he timed out of that system. He's always gonna need help with housing. He's never gonna be self-supporting. So far, the big solution's been to incarcerate him for, you know, drug possession, minor crimes like that, but, you know, that's a real high-cost housing solution. You know, should you guys are aware, we pay forty-eight dollars a day or something?
Well aware, well aware. Expensive reason.
And there's been study after study after study after study that shows that if we house people, we take care of their basic needs, then a lot of those other societal costs go away. You know, we're not paying to incarcerate people. You know, we're not paying for them to show up in the ER and not pay the bill, you know, by providing for their basic needs, you know, and in my case, providing case management and making sure that they don't go off the rails, you know, that it lowers the cost of, you know, for everybody, lowers their societal cost. You know, again, it would be great, I would love to have a, you know, all these studies that show, "Oh, we have this many apartments, and these are HUD-eligible, and these don't meet the standards, and this is what they're charging for this," but we don't have it. But I can absolutely speak to the fact that there is a need for affordable housing in Upstate County unquestionably.
So you're saying you got funding for thirteen HUD vouchers?
It kind of works like that, other than it's not really a voucher, I...
You get, it's the money that pays the rent.
Yeah, and we handle that, and we have been able to build that out, and we've been working on that. We started housing people in June, and in that time, I've not been able to find thirteen apartments that meet the HUD Fair Market Guidelines.
Would this type of housing meet that requirement, or...
Yes. Obviously, we run into some issues like that, because those type of projects are limited. There's some requirements that we find a little burdensome, like, you know, criminal history, things like that, which can be problematic for us, and sometimes we end up, as Jody was talking about, where people shuffle, so somebody who may have the income problems that our people have, but they don't have the criminal background, which not all of mine do, the most, might move there, and then their apartment's free. So we have a, you know, that doesn't, it's not a pass, yeah, it doesn't solve all our problems, but it does make things a lot better. And there actually are some type of HUD vouchers being made available, not through the Housing Associate or Authority, but the Veterans Administration has had a big push, and I think Jody actually has one of my former residents who has a HUD VAS voucher, which is basically HUD Section Eight coupled with VA Supportive Services, they're doing the case management. So we have those types of resources available. I should probably next month open actually another transitional facility exclusively for veterans, so we will have quite a few HUD VAS vouchers made available continually, you know, as I get people. There's a bigger push for families, you know, veteran families, and we actually do a lot of that, veteran family reunification, you know, the veteran has, develops a substance abuse problem, the family fractures, and we're able to kind of get him back on his feet, get him clean, and reunify the family. And then at that point, they need housing. And this type of project would be...
Quick, do you have a question?
No, I was gonna ask, Matt's, I got a couple of comments, too, I'd like to hear that.
I think that's it, unless you guys...
Well, we appreciate your input.
Thank you, Matt, appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
As you gentlemen know, I recently sat on the Housing Authority Commission, and I've also done the City Planning Commission. And as part of the studies that, with the City Planning Commission, they are now looking at doing the housing study with the West Virginia, with the University of West Virginia. But something that we were talking about in the Housing Authority, of course, was the lack of low-income housing. And of course, as Jody had mentioned, that this is a rarity, that she has that vacancy, and that there are gonna be two, but there is a really long list of folks on there that still haven't, don't have the opportunity for the low-income housing. Now, there is the opportunity, of course, with a lot of our landlords that do have rent that is above what would be considered low income, and it does put quite a bit of a detriment on a lot of the citizens that have to have that kind of housing. And unfortunately, that takes them down to some of the mobile-home type of housing that may not be quite as adequate, or may not be as safe as what would be with this new development. I do get an opportunity to talk to a lot of students and a lot of lower-income folks, because I do rent my own home as it is, and I do talk to a lot of renters. And unfortunately, there is just a little track that you go around from one house to another, to another landlord to another, so I know Jody's seen all of the different folks then, and each one of the landlords can tell you, they probably get together and go, "Well, yeah, Mr. So-and-so's come to my house, and blah, blah, blah." But I do, and I will express the need for this in our community. Now, making the decision today or not doesn't really matter to me, but it is something that we really need to have in the community. That's all I have.
Okay, is anyone, Jody?
Just one quick follow-up to Matt, and we are working with him, those are mostly substance abuse-type people, just so you know.
Yeah, everybody I work with has some sort of, that project, Jody's really been cooperating with it really.
And we would love to do more, we, just so you understand where he's coming from, and I know we've talked to some landlords and tried to talk to them and work with, there are some individual landlord concerns about some of those individuals not knowing a background, not knowing, because they have a privacy issue. You know, if he comes to me with a tenant, he can only tell me limited information. So as a landlord, you don't, and I'll be honest, we've not had issues with Matt's program, but we worked with another one with two instances, and we had one gentleman, you know, was an alcoholic, and they thought he was in the program, he completely went off the back, because then at that point, they got him housing, he wasn't supervised, trashed the place. Another gentleman, it was a constant issue, to the point that he was calling me, and I had to call the police, and we had to have him removed, he actually threatened to kill our maintenance person over a refrigerator, he was hallucinating, he was yelling, I'm sure the city police will remember, right down off Main Street, at individuals hanging out the window. And that was, as a result of that, one of those programs, not Matt's, I want to clarify that, they've been very good. But I do know for a fact, it's been discussed, some of the local landlords, and I don't know what Joe's position or their management team would be, there is a little bit of a reluctance, even if they have something to match the guidelines of not knowing what that person's background is, and I'll be honest, and if you had property, you'd think the same way, is that person a convicted felon, a drug, previous drug dealer, drug user, alcoholic, what am I dealing with? Because most of these folks are in a recovery situation, is that correct, Matt? So there's some reluctance.
Most of mine are, some are, it's only they have a disabling condition, the requirements are my program, because it was done under, is I had bonus program, or that they be chronically homeless, so we're dealing with people that are repeatedly homeless over...
Just so you know, with that program, and where some of the landlords are...
And they have a disabling condition, which it can be anything, it can be physical disability, it can be cognitive, my habits, you don't focus on substance abuse disorder, so that's a little much my...
So that's probably some of the reasons he's had additional issues, other than just income, is reluctance, and, you know, good luck with them, and I will say that, but, you know, they've been very honest with us about the individual, and so we have a pretty good relationship, and would like to do some more with them.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on that subject matter? Okay, well, we appreciate your thoughts and comments, and appreciate you coming, and we will...
Did you have any countercomments, or not countercomments, but any additional comments relative after Jody's presentation?
I'd be, I don't want to be critical, but I would be happy to address any of the points in her outline that you would like me to respond to.
I think you've answered my question, I mean, unless you guys have something additional. Okay, well, thank you.
As a matter of fairness, I wanted to give you an opportunity to address anything.
Appreciate it. Okay, well, thank you all very much, and you folks can stay if you want to, and if you have to leave, you're welcome. I think we'll take a little recess, we've got about ten minutes before our next, we've got coffee.
My tea bag's... Do we record this? I didn't, I thought you did, but...
Record, of course.
Yeah, I guess that's the... Yeah, I guess that's the record.
Okay, it's ten-thirty, and we have a, our public hearing regarding requests from the City of Buchanan for a minor boundary annexation for West Virginia Army National Guard location, Upshur County Wellness Complex and related property for utility right-of-way in Brushbrook area. So we'll call our public hearing to order, and we will ask for comments first from the city.
Yes. If you don't mind.
I could, let me give you the information that's in the packet, an outline of what you have in the packet, if that would be agreeable.
Mr. Tenny, that's fine.
That's fine. You have the application that was filed by the City of Buchanan, the, I did not include the attachment ones, attachment number one, which was the map, you do have a copy of that in there, and attachment two, which is the right-of-way agreements, but that is in there. The map is on page nine, which is a little difficult to read due to the scale. Notice of public hearing was in the paper as required, I do not have the certificate of publication, I do have the two publications in which it was included, and I'll include the certificate of publication once that's received. We do have the meets and bounds description also in the agenda. Posting, or also requires a posting at five locations in the area to be annexed, and they were very close together, since it's a very small area. But I accomplished that, I took care of that. So it would be my opinion that the proper notifications have been made, proper legal ads have been made, and the matter is now for review by the commission.
Mr. Dawson?
And, Mr. President, commissioners, you do have in front of you a map of our proposed utility extension in reference to our minor boundary adjustment, as well as the properties that involve the Army National Guard, actually property owned by the Upshur County Commission and Upshur County Development Authority. If you don't mind, I'll first start off by referencing a West Virginia, uh, West Virginia Code eight-six-five, annexation by a minor boundary adjustment. In the event the municipality desires to increase its corporate limits by making a minor boundary adjustment, the governing body of the municipality may apply to the county commission of the county wherein the municipality or the major portion of the territory thereof, including the territory to be annexed, is located for permission to effectively annex by minor boundary adjustment. The municipality shall pay all costs and proceedings before the commission. One of the things in what we're doing within the code that qualifies this particular piece of property we're putting in front of you for a minor boundary adjustment is actually under subsection of eight-six-five, and this is where this applies to the City of Buchanan and its application to the Upshur County Commission. And that states where the territory proposed for annexation is contiguous to the corporate limits of the municipality. For purposes of this section, contiguous means at the time of the application for annexation is submitted, the territory proposed for the annexation either abuts directly the municipal boundary, or is separated from the municipal boundary by an unincorporated street or highway, or street or highway right-of-way, a creek or river, or the right-of-way of a railroad or other public service corporation, or lands owned by the state or federal government. In this case, if you don't mind, if I can approach the commission, show you this on a map, what we're talking about. We're, uh, we're doing under subsection one of the code, a minor boundary adjustment based off of the corporate line, which is around here by the cinema, and actually follows what we will call in effect the Brushy Fort Creek line, or waterways it alludes to in the code. The blue that you see here is a proposed twelve-inch, brand-new water line extension that will go, and will accommodate the Armory and the USPFO facilities. We'll also be able to accommodate any, any development, any future development, the twelve-inch water line is sufficient to, to accommodate that. It'll fall along this line and will actually go up to this point. At that point, it hits the National Guard property, and they will actually take the line into their facility, we can only put it up to their, up to their line. We have, and you'll see in your application, secured right-of-way, and actually a fifteen-foot strip at, at, at the advice of our attorney to have that actually annexed in. It's the back part of all of these property owners' property lines. You'll see in your application packet that they have all signed off with signature and certification agreeing to this fifteen-foot strip of right-of-way and annexation. I do have a letter from the county assessor, Helen Phillips, which indicates that none of these property owners' properties will increase as a result of this fifteen-foot strip of annexation. And essentially, the only thing that we're looking at annexing is, again, the Armory, property owned by the Development Authority and the Upshur County Commission. If you have any questions technical in relation to the water line, our city engineer, Jake Holland, will be more than happy to answer those questions. We already have existing sewer service that can be provided as well. This is the only thing that we're looking to tax. The interesting thing for us is that we're putting an application with the U.S. Department of Agriculture under the Community Facilities Direct Loan Program, because there's a financial contribution that is made by the City of Buchanan in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars as part of our contribution to the project, in particular, the conference center that we're talking about, we're not contributing to the Armory itself, just the conference center. That will be beneficial for economic development purposes, not only for the state of Buchanan, but also for Upshur County and our community. Basically, within that application, the way that we're going to pay off that debt is actually through our two percent BNO contractors tax that we have. Phase one, we were unable to, to put that in for funding reasons, that were already secured by the Army National Guard, but we will be able to implement our two percent BNO tax on the contractors for phase two and phase three of that project. The Army National Guard is fully aware of that. Our thought process in that is the money that we borrowed from the USDA, which is a total amount of seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, four hundred thousand of which will go, again, to our contribution for the construction of the conference center. A hundred and fifty thousand will go with a partnership that the City of Buchanan has with the City of Buchanan Water Board, and the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand that will pay for materials and expenses related to the construction of the aforementioned twelve-inch water line. The Water Board has also agreed in partnership with the City of Buchanan to eat essentially the cost of labor, because the Water Board and Water Department feel that it will be beneficial, obviously, in laying a water line out there for potential future development, they will, they will seek water revenue from that for utility rates. The remaining two hundred thousand will be spent on equipment and fixtures and amenities within the conference center, coupled with a hundred thousand dollar contribution from the Upshur County CBB, which will be payable in two payments of fifty thousand each, and then the remaining fifteen thousand is just money we put in for our bond council. Getting back to our two percent BNO tax, it's our anticipation that the two percent BNO tax on phase two and phase three of the project will actually pay for approximately sixty-five to seventy percent of the debt we're taking out with USDA. So in effect, the project essentially is at least two-thirds of the way paying for itself through our contractors' BNO. We cannot implement this BNO unless we have the annexation, obviously, because we cannot implement a BNO if anything is in our corporate boundaries. So it's very attractive, because in the end, we have this nice conference center, it will be beneficial to the county, again, and the city, people patroning the businesses, conferences, meetings that can come there, people staying in our hotels, it's good for our economy, and when you can go back to your taxpayers and tell them that sixty-five, sixty-five percent, at least sixty-five percent of the debt borrowed on that is being paid through the contractors doing the project, that makes it even more tangible. So I will be happy to answer any questions, as well, I'm sure, as our city engineer, if you have any related to this, but you do have, again, as, as Mr. Parker alluded to, an application for consideration for minor boundary adjustment.
I'm not an engineer, but I presume the twelve-inch water line is extra capacity, so that it will allow for future development, whether annexed by the city or not annexed by the city.
Yes, you know, in anticipation for, you know, eventual replacement of the infrastructure that are already there, you know, that will tie into that, continue to feed the airport, but it is designed for future.
And I see the mayor, Mr. Mayor, and I understand from your public statements in the past that the city is only interested in annexing those individuals who are desirous of that.
That's, that's my philosophy. I think I've made that pretty public over the years.
You have, and I just wanted to...
I think annexation needs to be beneficial to both parties. I don't like strong-arm approach. I think there's, there's a point in time when it's appropriate to annex, we have a number of those minor boundary adjustments that have been accomplished over the years that benefit both parties, and I think that that's it. I'm not for forced annexation, I'm public on that.
Thank you very much.
And again, just for the record to allude to, we are only talking that the annexation of properties that all of the interested parties have agreed to...
Correct.
...or are on board with as well.
Correct.
So the, the two percent BNO tax on phase two and three construction, then, since the Wellness Complex will be annexed also, if we develop that, then would that two percent BNO tax be on construction projects of the counties?
Yes, yes, if there are any contracting projects that are done, BNO tax can also be implemented, whether it be a commission project, a City of Buchanan project, or an Upshur County school board project.
And what's the, so what would the, what would the cost be involved in the, once we start developing that and, and hooking to the sewer and the water line for development there? I mean, that's pretty close to that, shouldn't be too much of an expense to tap into that?
I would not, I would not figure it would be that much, again, since, since those lines are close, the sewer may be a little bit of a distance away in getting that there, but the water line is right there, yeah.
There's an existing water line too there, now what side is it?
It's on the top of, you know, it's on the north side of Brushy Fork Road, that's a six-inch, that's a...
And that a map alludes to that on the key as well.
Now, the, the sewer line, the sewer line that's out there now, are all those folks tapped into that, able to utilize that now?
There's a number of people hooked onto that sewer. Everybody on Brushy Fork Road is not connected, but a number of people...
But they, but they can if they want to, is that what you're saying?
Well, people on the east side of the road, southeast side of the road have direct access, and we just completed a short extension last month to serve three, three more customers along southeast side of the road. As long as their, their property extends back to the creek, we can make it tap them, people could look onto it. We, the extension that we made, and we've made a couple of others, we've extended collector lines up closer to the back of the properties along the road, we picked up multiple customers with, with the extension. But the main, the interceptor sewer runs along the creek, and it's available. Any cost-effective connection, we would be glad to make. If it involves an extension, under BSC regulations, there might have to be a contribution by a party that was interested in hooking on. But other than that, that's why it's there, to serve those, those customers.
Okay, any other questions? Bo, do you have any comments or questions?
Now, according to the, uh, public notice for the hearing, uh, if, if there's no other comments for the commission, according to the proposed order, it reads as follows, "As therefore ordered, that such annexation to said corporate limits be in the same as hereby approved or confirmed, and the office of the Upshur County Clerk is hereby directed to deliver to said governing body," which would be the City of Buchanan, "and the office of the Upshur County Assessor, "a certified copy of this order as soon as practical after the rising of this court, given under our hand and seal this twenty-fourth day of January two thousand and thirteen." So that would be the...
Next order is...
Yes, the order of business, if there's nothing else.
Are there any other, any other comments, Dr. Reed?
Is there any possibility, well, first of all, supplement what Sam said, I wonder what the number, for your information, I wonder what the number of people that they're potential are that are actually hooked to the sewer system at this point? A question, and second comment, is it possible with the trailer port there and the advent of the convention center to establish a bicycle-walking path, either in connection with this project or along potential change of the road? Or maybe that's out of word for this discussion?
I can answer the second half of that question.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll yield to our, our engineer, Sam Ludlow, to answer the sanitary sewer question. It's our anticipation and projection and our long-term planning of our, of our existing path that's down by Wesleyan College, to actually ultimately in the future extend that out and along to where it can go around to Brushy Fork and out that way. So it's within our public works and our street department's long-term plan, if you will, to do those extensions. In the second, or the first question.
Sam, you...
Sam.
You want to know how many people are hooked to that now?
How many people are hooked now, how many others that aren't hooked, that are potential hookers?
Yeah, not in Upshur County, not in Upshur County.
Not in the city either.
Okay, Sam, you can address that question.
From my personal experience, now, I believe that probably three-quarters of the potential customers on the southeast side of Brushy Fork Road, between the intersection of Quarter H and Twin Oaks Mobile Village, are hooked on. And if you count the customers in Westview Acres and Trailer Port, it would be much higher than that. I think the community center is not hooked on, but with the extension that we just completed, there's three customers there, the next three customers back toward Quarter H have been hooked on for some time. The Toyota car sales is connected, so on that side of the road, most of the customers out to and including Twin Oaks are connected. There aren't very many customers connected on the northwest side of the road. There's a few, Ford Jenkins Ford and a couple of other customers there. And then at the airport, we cross and go up to the airport, and there's one other customer, residential customer on the other side of the road, northwest side of the road, it's one there. There certainly is potential to connect a number of people. If we have capacity in the interceptor, certainly, on the, you know, we are certain, it's a matter of having an opportunity to make extensions, collector sewer extensions. And in fact, the matter that we will talk about next, I guess, we're pursuing a project that would include doing some infill in, in Brushy Fork area.
I had to answer a question, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
Mr. Parker, did we receive any written comment that, to the commission relative to the proposed annexation?
No, we did not, didn't receive any calls or written comments.
Okay. Okay, then at this time, I would ask for a motion that we approve the request for the annexation.
I make that motion.
I'll second that. Move, so move.
All right, make that movement. No, I don't want to do that either, I'll move.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion carries.
I think this was simple before we turned that class on Parliament of the Future.
Yeah, well, trying to educate them, but it's difficult, I tell you.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so it's, our next appointment is at nine-ten forty-five, and we're past that, so, and the purpose of that is review information, consider requests from Tenerton Public Service District regarding boundary adjustment to increase the service territory, Red Rock Road area, Lawrence area, Finks Run area, and other areas west of corporation limits. Do we have information in your packet, thirteen through twenty-four?
I'll go through that information that I included in the packet for the commission and the agenda. Page, excuse me, thirteen and fourteen is statute sixteen thirteen A two... is, uh, statute sixteen thirteen A two, which is, deals with, uh, enlarging, reducing, merging, uh, et cetera, of, uh, public service districts, uh, is, uh, what's covered in the, in that, uh, section of code. And there are, depending on the desire of the commission, if, there's certain requirements, if the commission wants to have a public hearing and, uh, consider enlarging, uh, Tenerton PSD, uh, either to what they've asked for or similar is, uh, Class One legal ad, twenty-day notice at least, no more than forty-day notice for hearing, et cetera, et cetera, that you have to comply with, uh, the regulations. I did contact the Public Service Commission and, uh, because there's also a section of code sixteen thirteen A one, which is not in your agenda, dealing with, uh, plans that were developed in the early nineties as it relates to consolidation and merging of public service districts. Uh, and they do not have those in electronic format, uh, so I, I'm not sure how that would relate to that plan. Every county does have a plan, uh, but those were highly controversial at that time, and the legislature sort of moved off center of those. Everybody had a plan, filed a plan, pretty much that was it. But page fifteen starts, uh, just a description of a survey, uh, for the boundary adjustment. Uh, page seventeen is the map, uh, just a small copy of a map that was provided by Tenerton. Eighteen is the hearing, that, uh, public meeting they had from, uh, September of two thousand and ten. Starting in page twenty, deals with, I researched the minutes the best I could, back from, uh, beginning April nineteen ninety-five, to the June eighth hearing of nineteen ninety-five, is what you have there. And, uh, there appeared, there's a couple of different, uh, items transpiring at that point, Brushy Fork and other areas. And, uh, the June eighth hearing was the final hearing on that area. So, that's the information that you have in the packet, uh, or agenda.
Okay, we had, um, uh, discussion last week, and, uh, Sam was out of town. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, allowed the opportunity today, so I'm, I'm not sure if we want to start with Sam and let him address, uh, the, uh, what the city's proposing, and then we'll, we'll get back to, uh, Tenerton PSD, and then we'll try to see what, how things work out then.
I have, uh, several items, and, uh, I always bring a map, that's something along my way home. Right. I don't, I don't know how you want to handle the map. Do you want me to bring it up there?
Let me just walk right down.
And that's, maybe, let's not necessarily start with.
Why don't you go ahead and start explaining here also, then we can refer to the map.
Okay. I think that, uh, maybe the first thing is to note the, the history of what transpired with.
Can you just hold for a second? I think we need to get audio.
Come around covertly. Is that okay?
All right, that's fine. Um, with the reduction, um, and then there was a big project in eighty-six and eighty-seven, we built a new plant. Tenerton built their collector sewers. Um, Buchanan built some upgrade sewers and some extensions. Um, and, and during the course of developing that project, Tenerton's territory was expanded from, uh, an area in the Tenerton community to an area that enveloped, uh, Buchanan. And after that project was completed and, um, we kind of settled into our new facilities in the early nineties, um, there was a lot of interest in extending service in the Brushy Fork. Um, the regulatory agencies were very interested in serving the Mobile Home Park and West Few Acres. There was a proposed, um, uh, elder care, uh, facility in, in the lower valley. Um, there was interest relative to the airport, but there was just, there was a lot of interest in providing service. And we, Buchanan, felt that we had an opportunity to provide that service.
That's the City of Buchanan.
City of Buchanan, yes. Um, so, we, we promoted that opportunity. And we had several meetings, including Tenerton and the County Commission. Some of those meetings included people from the Public Service Commission. And we, uh, established that Buchanan would have an opportunity to undertake a project. And we began to, to develop a project. And in order for us to develop a project, um, we wanted, and, and it would be necessary, that that territory not be in the Public Service District.
The Tenerton Public Service District.
Tenerton Public Service District. Um, so, kind of the arrangement was that if we could undertake a project within a reasonable amount of time, that that territory would be relinquished. And, um, we, we pursued developing a project. But before we could complete, um, preparations and undertake a project, ETI came forward and said, "If we don't get sewer service, because we're planning an expansion, we have to expand in order to, um, make it profitable for us to stay in Buchanan. And the only place we can expand is where we have our own treatment facilities. And if we can't get public sewer, um, we're going to leave Buchanan." So our focus was, was shifted.
From Brushy Fork.
From Brushy Fork. And part of our work on Brushy Fork was, uh, to identify a territory that would be removed from Tenerton PSD. It doesn't have to be in Buchanan. Buchanan has authority to go twenty-five miles beyond the corporate limits with utility service. And, um, Dale Bennett, um, had prepared a identification. We, we looked for watershed. We, we consulted with, with Dale, but Dale, working on behalf of the County Commission, had prepared a, a, identifying an area. It was, uh, a map survey, not, not a field, not a ground survey, but identifying that territory. And then the Development Authority was instrumental in the prod, developing a project for, to, to serve ETI. And actually Frank Moose was the one that approached the County Commission requesting that additional territory be taken from, uh, Tenerton PSD, not the city. Although we were a participant in all this, we were working with Frank to develop a project.
And that would have been the ETI, ETI portion of the, of the project.
Yes, yes. ETI is not in Brushy Fork.
Right.
And, and so, again, when we were, we're going to develop, sewers are dependent on, uh, draining spaces. So we work in watersheds. So when we looked at Brushy Fork, we, we wanted the Brushy Fork watershed, because you extend sewers that drain by gravity, they follow streams, natural drainage. So when we looked at ETI, um, we would have been interested, were interested, in the Fink Run and its major tributary Mud Lick, um, those watersheds. And these are my only copies of the, of the description of the survey, um, that Dale Bennett prepared, had about that time, uh, which would have been in the mid-nineties. Um, one of them clearly was done in ninety-five. Um, and for clarity, I have redrawn them on the USGS map. And of course, one of them is Weston Road, Fink Run, Mud Lick, and the other one is Brushy Fork. But those boundaries correspond with the boundaries that Dale had prepared. And at about that time, um, the commission changed the boundaries. Now, just to, uh, follow on that history, um, our, our focus was redirected to the Weston Road, and we submitted an application to the Public Service Commission for a certificate of convenience and necessity in June of nineteen ninety-six, um, with a funding proposal that were all contributions for service, not, not a grant and loan program, but which included fifty thousand dollars from the Upsher County Development Authority. Um, so, the county was actually a participant in, in funding that project. We received the PSC order in October, um, four months later. We, the project was really in two parts, a gravity extension out to Union Drilling, and then a pump station and, and extensions that went up to the transfer station and the proposed, at that time, Highway Department garage. Um, so the first part of it was completed by March of ninety-seven. So we did that first leg through the winter, that winter. And the second part was completed by, uh, December of that year. So December of ninety-seven, we completed that. Then our focus shifted back to Brushy Fork, and we submitted a applica, an application for a certificate of convenience and necessity to the PSC, um, in March of nineteen ninety-eight, um, to do Brushy Fork. Got the certificate in August of ninety-eight, and proceeded to extend the line, um, build pump station, extend the line out to West Few Acres and, um, the Mobile Home Park, um, by March of two thousand. So, um, that kind of sets the stage, and, and the County Commission also directly, not through the Development Authority, but directly, uh, contributed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that project. And actually, we didn't spend that hundred and fifty thousand, all of that hundred and fifty thousand, I think was, we used a hundred, and then they carried over and contributed the, the remaining fifty to a subsequent project. We've remained active in these two territories. I mean, it wasn't that somehow we got opportunity to do a project, and we did a project, and then we disappeared. We've been actively engaged in, in, uh, both Weston Road and, and Brushy Fork. I think there's three.
Two there.
Thank you.
These identified projects that we've undertaken, both first, first on Weston Road, then on Brushy Fork, um, starting with the most recent, going back to the original project. Um, and you can see, um, we, we've had twelve different projects in both Mud Lick and, or, uh, in Weston Road and Brushy Fork. Um, and in addition to the original project, um, on Weston Road, we've, um, well, including that project, we've invested over a million dollars on Weston Road. Um, and similarly, in Brushy Fork, including the project that I just mentioned a few minutes ago, uh, relative to customer service, the Wayside Baptist Church, and Rudy Rowan, and Tim Harris, we just extended a, us collecting line to pick up those three customers that we completed last month. Um, we've invested seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, we, we have been continually active in, in these, both of these areas. Um, I think that it's maybe a good time to look at math. Um, do you want to come down and look at that?
We could.
We have a, an overall sheet, and then maybe a little bit larger scale, but maybe not. This, this really shows it better. Tenerton does have a service area on the northwest side of Buchanan. This ligament addition is part of their system. And, and that was established in the project that was undertaken in eighty-six and eighty-seven.
And also people.
This is the, the base part of, that the interceptor that tied into Buchanan's system and went out to provide service to the Heisman was built probably in, oh, maybe the very early eighties or the late seventies. But all of Tenerton's collection system, um, other than that interceptor, which of course you serve customers off the interceptor, but that, that was, at, at that point, I'm sure they've added other, uh, systems since then, but at that point, uh, the collection system was built here. And we're not showing all of Tenerton. We wanted to have a piece of paper. They, they extended out here. I want to make that clear. We're not trying to minimize what's Tenerton, but they serve out on the Thomasville Road and Stony Run, and they have an extensive service area. Um, this is the core Buchanan area. These are the extensions that we've done. Um, this is Brushy Fork. This, this shows, and I was noting that we serve customers on the southeast side. We're not, we're not showing that we serve up in here. We don't serve out here. We have interest in that. Um, Mud Lick, we do serve. Almost all the customers or have service available to almost all the customers on Mud Lick. The landfill closure program provided financing for that project, um, helped Buchanan close the old landfill. And one of the obligations of closing the old landfill was dealing with leaching. And, and instead of building a small package plant out at the landfill, they were willing to finance an extension and paid Buchanan to build this, this sewer. And they were very generous and, and basically insisted that we pick up all the customers, uh, which of course were in our interest. So, this, this is pretty complete out here. Now, the opportunity to do that was made greater by the fact that the original project, where we picked up at, at Tenerton's boundary and extended out, um, and went out Mud Lick. where we picked up at Tenerton's boundary and extended out and went out Mud Lick to Creek. And we had already gone out to the Highway Department Maintenance Garage. So the first phase got us to here, and then we went the rest of the way. But then we also made an extension out, which are on that list, out to Hampton Inn and then another extension out to Rennie's. And then Dave Anderson built Quarter H Tire. He approached us. We did a preliminary engineering report to investigate that, looking for financial support from the benefiting party. And we kind of reached the point that sewers are pretty expensive. And even though we are very cost effective in the manner in which we build sewers, people can't afford. He was insisted that he wanted service. We did an engineering report and said, well, it'll be $200,000 and you're going to have to pay if you're part of that. He couldn't do it. And we appreciate that. But with that, we'd also done investigation to serve what now is Shaw's property, I believe was the Windhamar property relative to the airport and/or the armory. We had done an investigation for that.
Was it cost effective or not cost?
Well, it didn't, it wasn't, it never came to pass. I mean, the armory is located somewhere else, so.
As far as the Windhamar property, that's something that you're looking at extending. Would that include Mr. Windhamar? Would that include Dave and then go to Windhamar?
Yes. See, how we've handled this, Quarter H is a major impediment to running sewer lines. And we've been very effective in collecting sewers to a point at the lower end of the valley and then pumping across Quarter. We board and jack across Quarter H and Sphinx Run here, probably 300 and some feet. When you try to do that and maintain 0.4% grade on a gravity sewer line, that's very difficult. But a force man, that you don't care about the grade, it's not nearly the issue. We did that here and we did that at the Hampton Inn. And the design that we've been looking at and which we would, with the project that the Development Authority is encouraging us to undertake at this time, we'd extend gravity sewer out to near Dave Anderson. You just barely get him with a gravity sewer. And then you put more gravity sewer on this side, but go to a pump station across Quarter. So we have an extensive system out here. And, you know, you've got all of Buchanan, this little pocket of Tenerton, and then a lot of interceptor. And as I note with the exhibit that I just gave you, we've got nearly $2 million of investment in this. And part of the reason for that investment is the opportunity to attract customers that help support our system. And we don't want to lose that opportunity. And it's not like, again, looking at that exhibit, it's not like we did a little bit and then disappeared. We've been actively engaged out there continuously as there's reason and opportunity.
Does this area connect to Tenerton in some way?
No.
Existing Tenerton?
No. No, that map that you first looked at, this map. This is a watershed. This is Sphinx Run watershed. So, and it goes through the county line. This was taken out. So there would be Tenerton here and there might be, well, actually, now, the little creek that goes up Route 20 has also been taken out. But other than that, there would be Tenerton around here. So there is no, I mean, this little isolated pocket, which, if there's changes, it seems like taking this out of Tenerton makes more sense than adding something in. You know, it's awkward. Here we are, where Buchanan discharges into Tenerton and Tenerton discharges into Buchanan. If Tenerton builds more out here, Tenerton will discharge into Buchanan, who discharges into Tenerton, who discharges into Buchanan. And that's.
What challenges does that create when you have a situation like this?
Well, I work on a lot of projects, working for consulting engineering firm. It's one of the beauties of the goal that I have with the city. It's us. It's our fault. Everything that you do, planning, design, construction, operation, it's us. So if something's not right, it's us. You, you, one of the challenges that I had with consulting engineering firm is there's the consulting engineer, there's the owner, there's the contractor, there's the funding agency, and it's always, well, they're responsible for that. And you've got that same kind of thing here that we control everything from the customer to the treatment plant. And we're glad enough to have Tenerton have the collection system and they discharge into And then we control that on through. But it just complicates. I don't think it's cost effective and I don't think it's operationally as effective as single source responsibility. We really haven't seen the current application that Tenerton has made. I have seen the application that they made in 2010, and it was in two parts. One part out here toward Lawrence and another part south in Hickory Flats and Dolmanville Road beyond the last project. And this area had more customers. The cost was less per customer, it was like $23,000 or $24,000 per customer, and this was about $29,000 per customer, $29,000 per customer. I wonder why they didn't focus on this, which is contiguous to their basic core of their It just didn't as good a fit.
You've not drawn up any specifications to develop this yourself, the headlines yourself, or have you?
Well, I didn't.
Any areas in question?
Well, part of it, we have.
What would your hookup? You're saying $29,000 per customer. What would your hookup?
We have not taken it that far. We were $200,000 for Dave Anderson. But, you know, they're looking at $4 million and 130 customers. So, you know, we haven't worked that through. But it would, if we go the route, if we were going to do it ourselves, with us doing the design and us doing the construction, I think it would be even more cost effective. But our opportunity to do that has proved to be difficult because of the availability of financing through the benefiting parties. It's just too much money. So if we have to go a more conventional route, then I think the unit costs or the cost per customer, however you want to look at that, are going to go up. And, you know, hopefully, we have more wherewithal within our operation to support a contractor than Tenerton might have. So maybe we can make those unit costs, those costs per customers some lower. But they have a bona fide engineering firm developing those numbers that aren't going to be particularly questioned.
Now, if you did this, then would you all be doing, would the city of Buchanan be doing the construction?
Probably not. What we're proposing at this point in time, we've advertised and received statement of qualification from engineering firms. Steve Foster came to me a couple of months ago and we went to Region 7 and we're trying to develop a project that is specifically to get from here to here. You know, we'll see, money wise, cost effective wise. I think you can see from our list, we do little projects and we do a lot of them. And I think that's cost effective. We stay actively engaged and we're very effective in what we do. So maybe we're, and we'll decide this as a result of what the engineering firm that we select advises. But we might look at smaller projects, but then follow that up with other projects. And we recognize, we've accomplished a tremendous amount by getting these interceptors out here. But I've, we've had people looking for service out here, we've had people looking for service in here. There's places that we would really like to be able to do a little bit of infill. And I think maybe that's more important than extending a long ways on out our system. I think that another thing that we have concern or interest about, you've seen in our newsletter, the city's newsletter and in articles in the papers, that we're appealing judgments from the DEP and our BDS pro debt. And that particularly is addressing severity of discharge limits that we don't think are reasonable. But we are also getting tremendous pressure from DEP relative to our combined sewer overflows and the extraneous flow in our systems. And that.
Finish up the map.
Here's, this, the list that I gave you includes some from here. But this is work that the Sewer Department's done since 1990. And, you know, you just go through page after page. After page, we've done 20.5 miles of sanitary sewers. Our crews have built since 1990. This front page, those are the ones that we hired a contractor to help us. And again, we were actively engaged in these projects. They provided equipment and labor and we provided materials and we provided constant support to the job. We've also done these storm sewers. You're welcome to that list, too. You also note here in this, the purpose, you know, some of them are extensions. So you'll find, if you go through that list, you'll find Brushy Fork and it'll be an extension for new service. But you also find a whole lot of upgrades. You'll find Deanville, which there was an existing sewer in Deanville, leaked link a sewer. It was a real problem. Customers had problems and it contributed a lot of extra work to the system. And we went from the Vicksburg Pump Station and replaced the line and then extended it up to Baker Rapids. $300,000 project. So it's a major focus of our activity to upgrade existing sewers. And in fact, that may be the reason that we're not really pushing to do that work. We're getting enough pressure from DEP. Three, four years ago, Elkins doubled the size of their plant at the $208, $9 million. DEP would like to push us to do that. And we don't believe that's the right way to do it. We think that the upgrade, and now Elkins is out there building new sewers. Well, we think that's backwards. You ought to build the new sewers and see how much you can get out. And then see if you need to build a new treatment plant or upsize your treatment plant. We don't want to be in a position where, because we're not controlling the flow conditions into our system, that we have to spend $10 million and spread that out over our customers and Tenerton customers to pay that cost. We think doing that, I mean, and that is the plan that we've given to DEP, is that we're going to actively be engaged in upgrading sewer lines. And it has been a major focus of our activity.
But you are looking at, with the Development Authority bringing this to your attention, to extend that out to Windhamar. And that's something that you've started an engineering search and.
That's right.
That's a project that you're looking at. What we, I think we've looked at the map. What we've done, what we can do is make sure we have an understanding on that part of, most relative to what Tenerton wants to do. And then talk about the, because it seems to me like that what we have here is Tenerton and Buchanan looking at doing the same project, basically.
A lot of the same project.
A lot of the same project.
We have some different interests and.
Right.
But we certainly want to accomplish at least the first step of that extension to meet a more well-defined and immediate need. And as you see from our history, we're ready and interested in continuing to make those extensions as the opportunity and need becomes evident.
So, but basically, you were approached by the Development Authority to try to get sewer out to Windhamar. And that's where that would go to and then it would pick up Quarter H Tire along the way? That was part of the project?
The White Holiness Church and J.F. Allen Office Building and.
They'll pick all that up as it goes out through there.
That's right.
Now, I guess what we need to do now is, unless you've got some other, I mean, I think you've given us a good background of the city and what you've done and how everything Why don't we, why don't we let, unless you have something else that you want to say, let's let whoever's going to speak for Tenerton, whether it's the engineer or Terry or whoever.
I'd like to, we have, we have some concern about the operating activity with Tenerton. And that's part of the reason that I bring up about the extraneous flow. And we, in our efforts to resolve. And we, in our efforts to resolve sewer discharge issues at the Armory, the old existing Armory, US PFO building, we did some flow studies and investigation. I think it's interesting, we looked at this application from 2010, and it showed budget for operation and maintenance, field activities, not billing and not administration, field activities. Now, I don't know how real these numbers are. I picked it up out of the old application, $26,000. In that same year, we spent $440,000 in doing maintenance of the collection system. They have 700 customers, we have 3,000 customers. We certainly are much more aggressive and proactive in not just fixing things, but doing preventive maintenance and just being actively engaged. They don't have a staff. We have a nine-person staff, we've got a lot of equipment, we have capability of building, so we've got the capability of taking care of. I think we provide better service to our customers. And we did this flow study because of the US PFO, and we found that there was, we believe, not absolutely conclusive, but we believe that there's a lot of extraneous flow coming out of Tenerton. And we met with them, and they indicated they recognized that, but I don't, we continue to monitor that situation and don't see a lot of activity to aggressively address. I'd like to leave that as kind of a summary report, which you don't need to look at now, but gives you some information on what we're here.
As a, just as a follow-up, I have a question in my mind. The control of the additional inflow, that's a cost avoidance, future cost avoidance of new plant possibly, is that what I'm hearing or heard?
Yes. DEP is being very insistent that we continue to reduce overflows. And we've done a lot, and we've achieved a lot, but they keep pushing, and we keep working, but we've got to have the cooperation from anybody, whether it's Wesleyan College or the hospital that have their own collection system towards Tenerton, and what they contribute to our system. And if they're allowing large amounts of extraneous flow down in the system, we can't do enough to overcome that. And ultimately, one of the possibilities will be that DEP says...
Despite your best efforts?
Yes.
New plant?
Bigger, bigger plant.
Bigger plant, whatever, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
First off, we're not buying the city for operation of sewers.
Do what now?
We're not buying the city. We're not in competition with the city. Tenerton PSD has never been in competition, as Sam's alluded to. Our maintenance cost is low, but our plant is relatively new, too. We have spent money. Last year, we completely rebuilt the Murphy Mark Pump Station, which is a main pump station. Very expensive project. It was old. We just recently had camera this past summer and continuing having camera work going up the interceptor line to help curtail the inflow. Now, this has nothing to do with the project, I'm just telling you the background. We have just recently did a manhole survey and fixed some manholes that could be leaking or something there. But we have no, you know, our operation is cheap, but it's not to the fact that we don't fix things when they're broke. We don't have equipment, we don't have a bunch of employees. We run what we consider as an efficient operation. Last year, year ending June, Tenerton PSD paid the city of Buchanan $152,243.71 in treatment cost, now of a total revenue of $411,000. So our major expenditure is going to the city. We don't deny that they've done a good job with Brushy Fork area and that pocket right in there. I can't, they actually transport through our interceptor line out there now. And I agree that if this project is approved, they will go through, but that's only going through an interceptor line. Doesn't matter whose interceptor it's transporting. We pay them, they pay us for transport fee. We're looking at the fact also, they're going to extend the line out to pick up two days, three customers. They extended it out through the area there at Bill McNights and all that. Hillside doesn't have sewer. Collection system isn't in place. They went and picked up Brushy, the trailer park, those things. We're talking about putting in a collection system that covers all the people. We have spent right now on this project $52,517.18 on the Lawrence project. We held a public meeting back several years ago, a couple of years ago, nobody attended.
That was advertised.
That was advertised. Now we have the project, we have earmarked funds, and the engineer will explain the entire project, what we're doing in the collection system. But we're talking about putting a collection system, we're looking at the people. And he's, yeah, why didn't we go up another area contiguous to us, Hickory Flat? Hickory Flat's going to require a lot of engineering and several pump stations, and you would pick up several people, but it's going to be a very expensive project. That's why we split it off. We have a concentration of people in the Lawrence area, which was originally in the Tenerton PSD area. We have a project that will, you know, cover what they're talking about, quarter-inch tire, all that area. I can't say the funds are guaranteed, but they are there. We've talked to USDA, and I think somebody from the city had actually contacted USDA in regard to this. And it's just up to the commission at this point, do we want to proceed with the project and furnish sort of those people out there, or wait until the city gets money enough to expand the collection system to them? I think our project has more credibility right now than theirs.
Let me ask you a question about the availability of the money, and maybe this is something Shane or Steve can help us with. If the city, what's the cost of the project that you're proposing?
$4 million.
$4 million. If the city did that same project, then would there be any difference in the city getting the money as compared to Tenerton?
It's public funds, and any local government can apply them, if that's what you're asking.
And I guess my next question is, being involved in money from the state, let's say that, let's say that this money's applied for, how long, how many years would it take for it to be approved, would you say, average?
Depends on who you're asking money from. I don't, I tell you, USDA and CDC.
They, they talked to them. I'll let Dave handle that. He's talked to Joe Crickenberger, USDA, the money is there.
So part of it would be loan and part of it would be grant? Is that true? Well, I know on most of these projects, it's usually four or five years if you're in a competitive grant situation. I know the more you borrow, the better your chances of getting a smaller amount of grant if you're, if there's more loan money.
This project originally was something like $8 million, and USDA cut it back to the $4 million. That's part of why the project...
What did they cut back? What part of did they cut back?
The area, Hickory Flat and that area. Yeah. They said the money was, was not available for the entire project, and they'd have to cut it back. But we had, of course, I'm concerned, we've been into this project now, what, over, since we applied for funding, two years now.
That was for the $8 million, that was for the total project?
Yeah, and this $4 million has been earmarked.
What was, what's the difference in the, in the customer served? It seems like they're $4 million each project. What's the difference in the customer served between the two projects?
What's the difference in?
Yeah. What's, how many customers would, was in the Hickory Flat project, how many, how many customers would be served in the Lawrence?
What we were looking at was smaller customer count up Hickory Flat due to the fact that, you know, you got a long run-up due to not a lot of people.
Right.
And our money would run out before we could pick up more people than what we had in the Lawrence area. I don't remember the exact number of that.
Okay.
I'll let Dave...
Okay, okay, thanks.
Dave Wasson from Thrasher Engineering. The project was larger to start with, it was approximately $8 million, the $8.3 million project. And Hickory, which is the east Tenerton area, was approximately 180 customers. And the Lawrence area we're talking about was about 140 customers.
And what was Hickory Flat, 80?
Approximately 180 customers.
Oh, 180?
Yeah.
180 in Hickory Flat, and what was Lawrence's?
Lawrence is 140.
140. So there's 140 in Lawrence, 180 in Hickory Flat, and they were both the same cost project?
I think the Hickory Flat was slightly higher than that. I don't have the figures with me, but I think it was $8.3 billion total project cost, so it's 4.3 for Hickory Flat. And the cost per customer is higher on the Lawrence area, however, you, you wouldn't have as much operation and maintenance cost with that section as you would the Hickory Flat area, because you have a lot of valleys and ups and downs, and every time you have that, you have more pump stations, and you have small grinder pump stations for households, and that's a lot more to maintain for the PSD, and you have a lot of electrical cost for those. You have to send guys out sometimes to work on them. That's why we went with the more cost-effective, not only from, it's not cost-effective from a construction standpoint, total dollars, but it is more cost-effective from our operation and maintenance standpoint. That's why they proceeded to go that route with the Lawrence area.
So was the option available to go with one of the other projects?
Yeah. And after a meeting with the USDA Rural Development, talking with Joe Crickenberger, it was decided that we would pursue the Lawrence section, and we downsized the project and created Amendment Number One to the Preliminary Engineering Report, submitted it to USDA, and this was for the Lawrence project, $4 million. And it was for a loan and grant through USDA Rural Development, with a portion of the project to be funded through the Infrastructure Council. However, we didn't, it hasn't went any further due to the boundary issue, and that's why we're here, is to try to, before we go forward with it, just seeing if this is good to pursue.
Because if there's not, if there's not a change in the boundary, then the funding would be contingent upon, it'd actually be in Tenerton's boundary, correct?
Yes. USDA would like to see the boundary adjusted before they officially commit the funds. As Terry mentioned, they have approximately $50,000 tied up into the project. We've done a preliminary design of the project. Had a public meeting, they did a Phase One environmental, environmental study of the area, which has been cleared. It's been flown, but not mapped yet, and that's, that's where we're at.
Question I would have, maybe you can answer this, maybe not, is at what part of the process, Thrasher or USDA or whoever, would determine that it's actually in the Tenerton PSD area?
I get, you're at that point now, right?
Yeah.
I mean, should that have been done earlier, or who should have done that?
It just appears to be. I mean, I'm not a juror, but it looks like a simple matter that there was lack of communication between Tenerton Public Service District and the City of Buchanan, or vice versa. How did that happen? Or maybe there's no simple answer to that, but it appears that there was some miscommunication or lack of communication between the two entities, and that's what's caused you to come to our courtroom today.
I know it wasn't, the area wasn't in the city limits, I did check that, however, the boundaries are rather large for Tenerton, and I just, you just overlooked them, I'm sure.
But you've expended $50,000 plus so far in the project.
How much of that was expended before it was downsized? How much of that $50,000 was spent when it was an $8 million project? You know?
Probably $15,000, something like that.
Four, so $35,000 was spent on the Lawrence project.
Right.
Well, I guess, I guess my two concerns, number one is the fact of whoever dropped the ball or got the cart before the horse, the $35,000 was spent before determination was made as to whether it was Tenerton's territory. Because I assume that it would be common knowledge that you don't want to give grant fund or loan fund for a project if it's not in your area. So to me, that, that's a concern, to spend $35,000 before making that determination, which is critical to the project. And I guess the other thing is, if, if there's an opportunity to supply sewage service to 180 customers, that would be contiguous to Tenerton's PSD, I, I'm just thinking, unless there's other circumstances, if I run Tenerton PSD and I was going to spend $34 million and I could supply sewage service, and I know what you're talking about, your maintenance costs afterward, your, your construction cost is low, your maintenance cost is higher, but at some point in time, I would assume that Tenerton PSD will consider providing service to those 180 customers. So to me, that would be the simplest and the, and the most common sense group of customers to serve, is those that's just a continuation of Tenerton's service, instead of spending $35,000 out in the Lawrence area, which is not Tenerton's area.
Let me clear that up.
Okay.
Because back in 1995, when the territory was produced, I probably assumed that they took the Brushy Fork area. We were not a party to that reduction. We were not a part of that.
Now, how many public meetings were there during that time, do you know?
I don't know.
Because I know that Willie has done some research there and there...
Let's see, just, on April the 27th, that's the first minutes that I found, that's
Just, in April the 27th, that's the first minutes that I found, that's when Mr. Moots came. Mr. Gumm, the mayor, says Terry was there representing the Tenerton PSD concerning sewer service on Route 33 West and Brushy Fork area, and the commission took no action at this time. That was April 1995. May 4th, Mr. Moots again is back before the commission concerning sewer service for the ETI area. And that's when there was a public, a motion to make a public hearing on June the 8th at 1:30, to redistribute that area to the city of Buchanan, is how it's worded there. May 18th, there was a meeting about service, sewage service to the Brushy Fork area. And then on June the 8th at 1:30, the public hearing, reduction of the Tenerton Public Service District area. And so after discussion and comments from individuals in attendance, and there's a copy of the sign-in sheet for that June 8th hearing. And then it was, the Tenerton PSD area was reduced per the public notice, which was also included. I, I can't read all the names, but I started the list, and there was somebody from ETI, Mr. Moots, somebody else from ETI, can't read the name, Sam Ludlow was there, somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, it looks like, Mr. David Wilson from the Department of Highways, John Barlow from the City Council, Burl Long, city of Buchanan, Louis from Brushy Fork area, Joe Terry Gould from the Tenerton PSD, Steve Andrick from Union Drilling, Alan Hamner, sanitary board, John McGrew, Tenerton PSD, Nestor from Rock, or that's Record Dalva, sorry, Danny Allison, Gerald, Gerald from the Public Service Commission, and Carol Jean Walton from the Intermountain. That's who I showed at the, at the June 8th hearing that signed in.
For the purpose of that meeting, determination at that meeting, if anything?
At that meeting, there was a motion and a second to reduce, let me read it, it says, "Commission recessed at 12 until 1:30 for lunch. At 1:30 PM, the commission reconvened to conduct a public hearing on the reduction of the Tenerton Public."
One of the observations that I make is that the city of Buchanan began a sewage operation, and I'm not gonna even try to guess the first time. Y'all know that we used to build sewer systems by running pipes to the creeks and to the river, and that was our sewage system. I can't get my mind around all the history of this, but at one point in time, Tenerton Public Service District, and I was mayor of this town back in the mid-'70s, and I was on council for a few years following that. And there was much contention over building that sewer line out through Tenerton to serve a high school. And the impetus was put the sewer line to the new high school. That was in 1975, '76. I think we passed that school bond in '74, and that high school in Strux, I think we broke ground in the spring of '75. And so there was this, this impetus on the part of the community to build that sewer line to serve a high school. And I lose a little detail because I got away from it. But I know that there was a lot of pressure on the part of, of the folks who at that time were in charge of the city operation, that they wanted to tie annexation to constructing the sewer. And as a result, Tenerton PSD was formed. And I had to say rightly so. I don't believe it was right to deny service based on annexation. So Tenerton PSD was formed. And what I have the most difficulty with is that territory assigned to them at that time created this donut completely around the city of Buchanan, where we would not be able to develop in any direction. I think that's wrong, and I think that needs to be corrected. The statutes of the state of West Virginia permit a municipality to extend its utilities 25 miles. Why don't, I still don't understand the thought process behind granting Tenerton Public Service District all the territory surrounding the city of Buchanan. Does make good sense, didn't make, don't seem, seem to me like it did make good sense then, certainly doesn't make good sense now. I can't believe that the county commission sitting at that time meant to throttle the development of the city of Buchanan. And it's one of the things that's created this issue. I have absolutely no problem with Tenerton developing their Public Service District in their area into the Brushy Fork, or not Brushy Fork, pardon me, out to Hickory Flat, all these little runs get mixed up sometime. But I cannot see the wisdom behind having Tenerton Public Service District occupy all the territories surrounding our town. It just doesn't make good sense to me. That's my comment.
Well, and it sounds like the reason for that maybe, Kenny, was that if the city wanted to annex areas that they extended to, that may have been the wisdom in saying, okay, well, then we'll give it to Tenerton. So, I mean, if that was the contention at the high school, it may have been part of the thinking there.
But I don't know of any other applications for sewage anywhere around the town at the time that would have warranted giving Tenerton Public Service District this, this control all the way around town. It's, it's created problems for our community since. And I think we ought to, at the end of this, maybe we ought to take a look at that.
Okay, any other comments?
We are contiguous somewhat in that area. We already serve the area out there along the Western Route, too. That is Tenerton PSD territory. It's been that way for a long while.
Legit addition, legit addition.
How many customers do you have legit addition?
Probably, I don't have an exact count, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of about 160.
That ties into the city.
Yeah.
All your customers.
I mean, the city ties into us with the Brushy Fork area.
Okay, and Steve?
If I could, in the world of economic development, when quarter H happens, and I'm not saying it, when it happens, I'm convinced we're gonna have to offer sewer and water from one end of the county line to the other, long-term. And certainly, this issue is gonna come up again and again, given the donut description that Mayor Davidson just outlined. The reason I approached the city in terms of extension of sewer recently was I had contact with what's happening out there on the Wyndhamar property. We've already got two 10,000 square buildings located there, a third ready to go up, and the potential for two or three more. Great location, but there's no water and there's no sewer. I was aware that Dave Anderson worked with us over years ago and looking at the cost of giving it that way as well, and he couldn't afford that, obviously. So when you look at a map, you think, well, a natural person to extend service out here based on the services there is the city of Buchanan. I went to Sam and said, how do we do that? Because I'm interested in developing both sides of quarter H. And we do have a plan for the other side, which we could fortunately use the hands and then. All I'm saying is that we have got to resolve these issues and improve communications, I think, between the two entities to make sure we don't run into this problem in the future. The opportunity to do this is now. I think the funding is available to either party, quite frankly. And I just hope if you can go ahead and get on it, because we need it pretty quickly.
Anybody else?
Mr. Mike, do you have any comments?
No. You're just there to get money when people ask you for yours. We appreciate that opportunity, Dave.
You're a neutral party here.
Obviously, our agency wants to promote infrastructure development, economic development throughout our seven counties, which are obviously being in the center of our region. We're willing to work with anybody who asks for assistance to spend. We'll continue to do that in the future, as with this project. You know, if it ends up being Tenerton that provides the service, if they need our assistance, we'll be more than happy to help them. If this is simple, obviously, the system has we have thus far, so we'll continue to do what we always do.
Thank you for that cooperation. Terry, do you have anything else?
The speed with the, which the people would get sewer in that area would be faster, I believe, with Tenerton PSD, given where they're at with the project and with their past history on projects. The east side, Phase 2A, they completed, they extended to 140 customers. It's been done for two or three years now. We provide inspection services for those jobs when they go out and see it through to the end, and just like that, then.
We don't agree with that. We think we can support projects, we have quite a history of supporting projects and doing projects, so we think we can support a project and make it happen very quickly. And we've appeared before you quite a number of times and delivered what, what we indicated that we could do. And I think the Route 20 North to Audrey's is a clear example that we came with a severe deadline and we delivered. And I think we can do that with this as well.
Would that include the collection system at the same time to all the people?
Well, it will include the project that we developed. And our, the project that we've talked to the engineering firms that have submitted qualifications is that we're looking for a project to get to the Wyndhamar property specifically and do infill in, in some of the other areas that Terry has talked about. And we'll, we'll see what the opportunity is funding-wise to carry on beyond Anderson's quarter H tire.
Donnie, if I could, just one other thing which popped into my head there. If you look at a map and you're talking to someone moving into the area about where they're gonna get service, I mean, tentatively, you're gonna have the Tenerton PSD providing sewage to the Buchanan, the sewer department, back to the Tenerton PSD, back to the city of Buchanan, if we go that route on quarter H. Now, does that make sense?
It's already there.
Not, not that much.
Not that much.
Let me ask a question, because it's getting closer to lunch out here. These guys, they give the ground.
Your alarm is going off.
But let me ask you this logistically. Let's say Tenerton had a section that went into Buchanan, and then went into Tenerton, and then goes to Buchanan, then is there a fee for every time it goes into a different system?
Trash.
And that's based on, so if gallons go through that, it's metered?
Goes through that.
So, so does that raise the cost of the sewer if it went through, if it went, switched two or three different times? Does that increase the cost because every time you go through that section, it's like a little cold road?
It's based on the gallons, just based on the gallons, more gallons, more cost.
But I'm saying, like, if Tenerton went through Buchanan, then you have to pay so much a gallon to the city of Buchanan, right?
Right.
We're going through that section of their line. And then when it goes back through yours, and the city has to pay you so much for going through your line, and then, then, then you have to pay the city again when it goes back into their lines.
It's very cumbersome.
Yeah.
And it's, of course, ultimately, the cost is borne by the customer. Costs are passed on to the customer to maintain the service. The administrative costs, you know, yeah.
Okay, anything else? We will put that on the agenda for next week and.
Just tell you.
Yeah, we'll do our homework. We appreciate everybody coming out to the comments.